Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to call the study session to order. The clerk will call the roll, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Daigle has an excused absence.
First item on the agenda is clarification for any items on the consent calendar. Mr. Hen.
I have none.
Mr. Selich?
I have none.
Councilmember Gardner?
Oh, I have a slew to make up for them. Number six. Are we -- we're doing this, and it looks like sort of a quid pro quo. We give something, we get something in the alley. But are we sure that we are going to eventually get an alley out of this?
Yes, we've already actually gotten the documents in, and they're already executed.
Oh, okay. I mean, no, I meant--
A full alley.
A full alley.
We're taking 15 feet off this property, and another five feet will come off the property towards Balboa Boulevard when that one develops. And that's how we get the alley as we go across. This is the end right now. There -- we've developed all the way down to this property, so it's the next one in line.
So we do think we're fairly confident we will have an alley there at some point?
Eventually, we will, yes.
All right. And then, at some point, could we have some information? Because I'm confused as to when we do make people pay for something as far as city property and when we don't. Nothing in depth, but just perhaps a top of the line at some point. Then, on number seven, eight, and nine, I noticed we had overages from the original amount. I just wanted to be sure that we don't feel that we are -- that people are underbidding, do we?
We don't feel they're underbidding, but we do feel we're getting very good prices right now. And what we've done is try to identify areas where we can capitalize on that. If you're speaking to the additional money we're adding to the contingencies, yes. And so we've actually pointed that on each -- I'm sorry. We've pointed that out in the council memos where we have opportunities to do that. For instance, there's one tonight, item 10. We're going to be doing the Peninsula Point, and we're adding additional concrete to it. And we'll identify it in there and ask for additional money on that.
Okay. And then finally, just a question on number 15, the final track map. This was a delay. It's almost a seven-year delay. Is there any issue, problem with that? I mean, it did strike me as far as the time span.
I think the delay has a -- is coupled with the economics. And typically with track maps, when you file the tentative map, you have so many years to, and I believe it's two, and then there's a series of extensions you can do. I believe the economics of the last five years have allowed them to kind of put the project off. It's changed ownership a couple of times. So as the condition says, we don't record the final map until the first building permit is ready to approve. And it's taken some time, I know, for this particular project to reorganize and reorganize and get ready to go. But I checked with our planning department. I believe they're within their statute of limitations still in their map.
Yeah.
The state had extended the timeline several -- they've extended the timeline many times just because of the economy.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Petros?
None, thank you.
Mr. Hill?
None, thank you.
And I have none. We'll move on to item two, review of east oceanfront encroachments and potential solutions. Mr. Kiff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We have a good presentation prepared for you with a number of good questions that we'd like your direction on, so I'll let Brenda Wisnewski take it from here.
Good afternoon. Review of the east oceanfront encroachments involves some encroachments that have been located in this area for quite some time. Basically, they are improvements that are located on the public beach, and they were being brought to the city's attention because last May of 2012, the California Coastal Commission issued notice of violations to 15 property owners along that area on the basis that they did not comply with the Coastal Act, as well as the city's policies and our land -- our local coastal land use plan, as well as our city council policy. The Coastal Commission also indicated that in that fact that we are pursuing resolution to those violations, that they have held off on issuing other notices, but they have identified approximately 58 other properties along that stretch that are potentially also in violation. Examples of the encroachments include turf, as well as hardscape, as well as ornamental landscaping, and also irrigation and lighting. The extent of the encroachments are -- some properties have no encroachments, while others go about 65 feet or so beyond the property line. The policies that the Coastal Commission referenced, as I mentioned, was the local -- the coastal land use plan, as well as the city policy L-12. And basically, they state that in this area of the peninsula that no encroachments are permitted, with the exception of trees that are in place prior to 1991, or ground cover. And there is a discrepancy of what ground cover might be, but bottom line is that it can be concluded that these encroachments did not comply with these policies. The residents brought to our attention when they received the violations of this issue. So the city made effort to try to coordinate resolution between the residents and the Coastal Commission staff. We held several meetings, one that included basically staff in the Coastal Commission to try to explore possibilities of resolution. We also had a open meeting that included the residents and the Coastal Commission staff. And we also met with the Coastal Commission on follow-up meetings. The residents are represented, the majority of them, by a single entity, Jim McGee, and he has met with the residents and proposed to us a potential solution that would be similar to what we have in place on the west oceanfront area. It's basically an encroachment program that allows us to identify what types of improvements would be allowed in the area where those improvements could occur, in exchange for a fee or mitigation fee. And that's been quite successful in West Newport, where it's allowed us to improve the street ends with parking, as well as improve public access. So a similar program could be created for the west -- the east oceanfront. Again, we have a 15-foot right-of-way that would allow us to create a program that would allow us to regulate basically what's there, in exchange for fees, and again, a mitigation program that could be applied to this area for the purposes of improving the public's access to the beach. Another issue, as you can see in this photo, is that we have improvements beyond the 15-foot area. So what would be required there is a restoration program of sense that would require removal of any improvements that are not consistent with the policy or the Coastal Act, and primarily that is the landscaping or turf, as well as hardscape. The bottom line is that the Coastal Commission is seeking a comprehensive resolution to this issue, and the city is the obvious party to conduct that. They have multiple property owners, and resolution with individual property owners is very difficult for them to perceive, so they are really supportive of this approach, and they feel that it would be a reasonable approach and trade-off in that it would be done in a comprehensive manner. So the general approach would be that the city takes the lead in creating a solution in the situation. We had to create an encroachment program that mirrors what is in place in west oceanfront, as well as conduct the restoration efforts that would be conducted beyond the 15-foot boundary.
You said to restore the area. The city would restore the area, or the resident would restore the area?
The best-case scenario is the city would go in and do the restoration effort itself in one comprehensive approach. The cost of that is to be seen, but that would be the best-case scenario.
Best case...
Are you saying that the city would pay for the cost of it, or it would be reimbursed by the residents?
That has something to be discussed along the way. We -- it's really a policy decision of the city council. So in developing this program, what we are potentially proposing, the action would be first to initiate the amendments. This is a lengthy process where we do need to amend the coastal land use plan, as well as city council policy. And in the council's agenda later in the evening, we actually have a request for the council to make those initiations for amendments. And those would then create the policy that would allow us to create the encroachment program and put the details to the issues that you're already probably thinking about. As I mentioned, we want to ensure we have Coastal Commission's input in developing this. The whole purpose is to resolve the notice of violations. And if we have the Coastal Commission's support, it can be done through a settlement type of agreement that would resolve the notice of violations, and -- but in order to do that, we need to have the Coastal Commission's support as we move forward. Another important piece to the action plan would be to coordinate the property owners. Obviously, this involves them significantly in that they would be responsible for paying fees on an annual basis and updating those permits. It might have to require some type of modification to the improvements they have out there now, depending on what the program looks like.
Brenda? I'm wondering if you could please speculate on what would be the result and outcome if we didn't initiate amendments?
If we did not step in, potentially, the Coastal Commission's -- one remedy is for them to pursue the property owners with a cease and desist order and take it through that route, which would involve fines and, I believe, it's called a restoration plan that would actually force them to take action.
Do you have an idea generally of what that might burden an individual homeowner with, in terms of that cost, fees, penalties, plans?
An example could be what happened in West Newport, where there was some illegal modifications done in the dunes, and they were required to restore those. And it was, in my understanding, it was quite expensive.
Can you give me an idea?
Of cost?
Yeah.
Wasn't it $25,000?
I think that could have been the fine.
Fine, yeah.
According to the letter, I think it's $6,000 a day fine, but doesn't count related to the improvements that have to be made. This approach really is a compromise of sense, and it gives the Coastal Commission their remedy of the extents of the improvements in exchange for the property owners to have their area 15 feet, as well as the mitigation fee that would contribute towards the public improvements. As I mentioned, in West Newport, that resulted in some great access to the street ends.
Brenda, remind me, what's magic about the 15 feet?
That is where the public right-of-way is. That's where we have the public land. Anything beyond that is Thailand, is my understanding. We are limited to the 15 feet. So if we proceed the direction this evening, we would be moving forward and developing the actual encroachment program. We foresee it to be similar to what's happening in west oceanfront, but we would include in that the appropriate fees, most likely developing an assessment under today's market, and identify the mitigation program itself. The current program in place in west oceanfront includes that 85 percent of those fees that are collected go towards the public improvements. So we need to identify what those funds would be used for in order to gain support from the Coastal Commission.
Would there be, I assume, significant public hearings in that process? We'd have to go through a first reading, second reading?
That's correct.
And then was the Coastal Commission involved in the West Newport Beach encroachment agreement process?
Yes, they were. They have approved that program through our land use plan. And as was mentioned, was the restoration plan. The area beyond the 15 feet needs to be restored in accordance with the Coastal Commission's direction, so we need to identify what those improvements are and the associated costs. So any type of program we develop, we'd be bringing back to the council for establishing what this cost would be, as well as a plan for how those costs would be paid for.
Who pays for the staff time on this and the sequo analysis and doing all of the plans? Is this something the homeowners are going to pay for, or they're looking for the city to pay for it?
I think we'd like to discuss that with you. So I apologize, I'm going to answer your question longer than you wanted, but because we could just say that, yeah, the homeowner should pay for this. Remember, though, we have a council policy in place that, in effect, looked the other way on some of this. Not all of it, but some of it. And so there is -- there are plant materials out there that have been blessed by the council policy while not blessed by the Coastal Commission, and arguably, the city should be part of that solution, both financially and with staff time, whether it's a 50-50 split or a 70-30, I don't know. But we'd like your thoughts on that.
Has anyone tried to put a number on this? Because it looks like it could get pretty darn expensive, knowing the Coastal Commission.
I don't know that we've tried to put a number on it, but yeah, I'm sure you're talking about into the $100,000, $200,000, $200,000 and that level. Arguably, the restoration could be more than that, depending on what -- if there's monitoring associated with it.
As Councilmember Selish brought up, there would be environmental review required for the program, as well as implementation, and it would be brought back to the city council for consideration. It would be an ordinance form -- I'm sorry, a resolution form, actually, for the land use plan and the city council policy also, as it reviewed by resolution. And lastly, it does require the Coastal Commission to sign off on it. So that is the potential action for resolving this issue that the residents have been confronted with. And as I mentioned, later in the council meeting, you have the recommendation from staff to initiate the amendments. Although there's a lot of work to be done to kind of put the details to this effort, we feel it is a solution that would be an improvement to the area in that you are eliminating some impacts to the coastal access, as well as gaining some funds to try to create programs for that area.
Dave, you mentioned the city council policies that turned an eye to this. I'm wondering if you could spend a little more time for the new guy and detail some of that for me?
Yes, Councilmember Petros. So this is going to tap a little bit of, whether my good or bad recollection, we do have a council policy, and I'm going to forget if it's L-12 or L-17, and L-12, that dates back at least to the 1990s, where it said that, yeah, we're going to have encroachments, official encroachments up in West Newport, at the end near seashore, the Santa Ana River Jettie. But we're going to declare that the turf, sorry, ground cover and trees, and we just declared them ground cover and trees, near the wedge were not officially encroachments. And we didn't really define what ground cover meant. Was it turf? Was it the beautiful gazania there, or the box hedges? We didn't define that enough, so -- and nor did we really clarify what a tree was. Is it a bush? Is it a row of trees all in a hedge? We just kind of said, these are not encroachments, and those can stay. And then the argument was, provided they're not changed, they could stay. So that's why I think -- and the Coastal Commission will go back to us and say, you know what? We never approved that. That was what you guys did at the city. The Coastal Commission never officially blessed that, which is why they're looking at it with a different eye now and saying, maybe all of it has to go, versus just 15 feet of it, sorry, the area behind the 15. But that's the background of the policy. And that's why, looking at it from afar, to me, it looks like we just decided to punt on that issue.
Thank you.
Do we have any idea on how many square feet or how many acres needs to be restored?
There's probably about 75 homes along that area, and not all of them are encroaching. Lot widths in that area, I guess about 60 feet.
Could you flip back one of those slides? That does give kind of a good picture of what -- maybe the first one where you do the -- have the dots. Next one, it's a little bit. You could see where some of the homes have nothing at all outside them, some have a little bit beyond the 15 feet, and others stretch well into the -- towards 50 and 60, and maybe a little longer than that. And some of that material that's out there is arguably acceptable material, whether it's sand, dune grasses or otherwise. So while I'm answering your question, I think we'd have to go out and do a quick survey. To me, it looks like it's somewhere under five acres.
Does the Coastal Commission consider that dune habitat out there?
It is not designated dune habitat.
No, okay.
Councilmember Gardner?
This seems, in some ways, like a no-brainer. We've got a program in West Newport that's working, duplicate it. But I'm uncomfortable going forward, not having any clue as to costs and as to who's paying for what, whether we are going to just have the city pay for it, or whether we're going to come to some agreement. And if we think we're going to come to some agreement, then we better have an agreement before we go forward, because the individuals may not think that they should participate. So that would be my concern as far as a next step.
I think the problem that we have is that it's going to be hard to understand what the cost is until we get into the process. This is -- this situation is qualitatively quite a lot different than that West Newport situation that was referenced, where a group of homeowners, I think about a half a dozen of them, convinced somebody with a front loader to just mow down a whole bunch of bluffs. And, you know, so that was really an egregious act that needed to be corrected, although the correction of it was certainly extensive. They had to put back the dunes, and they had to do a five-year revegetation and monitoring plan and so forth. It was quite an undertaking. But because of the situation here being qualitatively different, as mentioned, because of the involvement of city policy and whatnot, I think the city really -- and from a practical perspective, I think the only practical way to get this thing resolved is for the city to take the lead, because there's so many homeowners, so many different variations of issues here. And it does involve city policy, city council policy. I think it's the only practical way to drive for a solution here. And so what I would like to do is move forward this -- move this thing forward to the point where we get more clarity about what will be required and a better estimate of the cost. We'll be investing staff time along the way to get to that point. But I think we're going to need another sit-down here. Once we understand a little better, we get a reaction out of coastal, we think we know where we're headed, and we can do a reasonable estimate, I think that'll be the time to sit down and talk about it, before we go any further with actual action here.
Can you put the action plan back up on the screen again? I almost think we have it backwards here, that we should go talk to the Coastal Commission and get an idea of what we're in for here before we initiate the amendment, as well as do the cost estimating that you and Councilwoman Gardner have talked about, and get an idea of what we're getting into here, because as we know from Sunset Ridge Park, and I know from some things I'm involved in, it can get to be an expensive, super-expensive proposition, and we really need to have an idea of what we're getting into here from a cost standpoint. I mean, like Councilwoman Gardner said, it's kind of a no-brainer on one hand, but when you're getting into restoring these sand areas and how the Coastal Commission looks at them and all the costs involved in it, it seems to me we ought to go talk to the Coastal Commission first, get an idea of what they want us to do, and start quantifying that and come up with some kind of cost estimate of what we're getting into here.
Well, we have had some conversation with coastal staff already, and so maybe, Dave, you or Brenda can summarize that.
I'll step back, actually. Brenda should summarize that. But one of the reasons we wanted to at least start a process, whether it's initiation of amendments or coastal dialogue, either one of those, I think, could come first. We hadn't brought this to you at all before, and you could sit and say, no, you know what? We're not going to participate. The Coastal Commission should direct those folks to take everything out beyond the property line. So I'm getting at least the sense from you that you're willing to go down the path of trying to support the 15 feet and then the rest. And, you know, respectfully, we hadn't had that direction until this very moment, so... But maybe Brenda can chime in and see what our coastal interaction has been.
I think what's critical here is to at least have a straw man to begin the process with. I think that's what we're talking about.
Based on our conversations with Coastal Commission staff to date, the most time-intensive effort will be developing the restoration plan. They're looking for, basically, a schematic type of plan that would identify, might even be a review on a property-by-property basis, what plants get removed, what plants get replaced, and a monitoring program to ensure those plants will be established. So that is probably the most costly part of this effort. So we received direction from council. We could put the resources towards developing that plan, basically in a conceptual form, so we can put some cost to it, and get some direction from the Coastal Commission that is meeting their needs.
Well, the thing to do is to get the Coastal Commission biologist, get her to come down here and just walk the area. I mean, she'll tell you pretty straightforward what, you know, what we're in for and what we're not in for, and probably be able to draw some boundaries of the areas that need to be restored. And I think should, you know, come down and do that walkthrough, and do that as a way to start quantifying what we're dealing with, so we can start putting some dollars to it.
Second, you might...
Yeah, I would -- I think it's okay to go down the path to investigate a lot of these issues, and I think that it would be wise for us to understand what the costs are. Dave, I have maybe a little bit of a different interpretation of L-12, where it says, "Encroachments in the area around there are, in fact, prohibited, with the exception of existing trees." And then it goes on to say, "ground cover," but it gives very clear, "such as ice plant and indigenous plantings," meaning those things that would require no irrigation. That's my take of that. So I don't know how culpable the city is in that overall discussion, and if there is going to be the notion of us marching down the path with the Coastal Commission, I think that the costs are something that we need to know, and they need to be shared and borne by the responsible parties. Secondly, the mitigation plan, as I read it, for the west oceanfront, had to deal primarily with parking, where there was, in fact, space available, residual area, that parking could have been provided for and has been. I don't know that that's the case out here. There doesn't seem to be, when I took a look at the area and drove around, a lot of area where we could find more parking and use a fund to mitigate that. Therefore, I'm very interested as to what staff would come up with as a mitigation for this, and what the offset and nexus is going to be for that. So while I do agree with my fellow council members to march down here, I think that the cost is going to be something, and the mitigation program, that I'm going to be very interested in.
Any other comments? Let me open it up then for public comments on this matter. Please come to the podium, where you'll have -- each speaker has three minutes. Please identify yourself as you come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jim McGee, and I'm the person that represents a good number of the oceanfront homeowners. I authored the letter to the city that is attached as a part of the staff report and that generally seeks to outline this issue, which really dates back to 1950. Some of the encroachments have been in place for that long, unchanged, based on conversations I've had with various homeowners. This issue really starts with Coastal Commission back in 1991, when the Coastal Commission approved the plan for West Newport, but Peninsula Point was kept out of it. In 2006, in 2007, I worked closely with the city and the city staff and the city council at the time to develop an approach with regards to 60-some-odd notices of violation that were sent out by the city at that time, indicating that these encroachments were not allowed under council policy L-12. And we got so far as a study session in 2007 with the council wherein I drafted a revised council policy that would have included the Peninsula Point oceanfront homeowners to the same extent as the West Newport oceanfront homeowners. The council ultimately decided not to go in that direction, and instead directed the city manager or city assistant manager at the time to send a letter to all of the homeowners in 2000...
in the area around there are, in fact, prohibited, with the exception of existing trees. And then, it goes on to say, ground cover, but it gives very clear, such as ice plant and indigenous plantings, meaning those things that would require no irrigation. That's, that's my take of that. So, I don't know how culpable the city is in that overall discussion, and if there is going to be the notion of us marching down the path with the Coastal Commission, I think that the costs are something that we need to know, and they need to be shared and borne by the responsible parties. Secondly, the mitigation plan, as I read it, for the West Oceanfront, had to deal primarily with parking, where there was, in fact, space available, residual area, that parking could have been provided for and has been. I don't know that that's the case out here. There doesn't seem to be, when I took a look at the area and drove around, a lot of area where we could find more parking and use a fund to mitigate that. Therefore, I'm very interested as to what staff would come up with as a mitigation for this, and what the offset and nexus is going to be for that. So, while, while I do agree with my fellow council members to march down here, I think that the cost is going to be something, and the mitigation program, that I'm going to be very interested in.
Any other comments? Let me open it up then for public comments on this matter. Please come to the podium, where you'll have, each speaker has three minutes. Please identify yourself as you come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jim McGee, and I'm the person that represents a good number of the Oceanfront homeowners. I authored the letter to the city that is attached as a part of the staff report, and that generally seeks to outline this issue, which really dates back to 1950. Some of the encroachments have been in place for that long, unchanged, based on conversations I've had with various homeowners. This issue really starts with Coastal Commission back in 1991, when the Coastal Commission approved the plan for West Newport, but Peninsula Point was kept out of it. In 2006, in 2007, I worked closely with the city and the city staff and the city council at the time to develop an approach with regards to 60-some-odd notices of violation that were sent out by the city at that time, indicating that these encroachments were not allowed under council policy L-12. And we got so far as a study session in 2007 with the council, wherein I drafted a revised council policy that would have included the Peninsula Point Oceanfront homeowners to the same extent as the West Newport Oceanfront homeowners. The council ultimately decided not to go in that direction, and instead directed the city manager or city assistant manager at the time to send a letter to all of the homeowners in 2007, indicating that what is there can stay in place, that it meets the spirit and intent of the Coastal Act, as well as council policy, and that nothing should be added to it, but as long as you kept it the way it was, the city would support that. One of the problems, I think, that Councilman Hen has indicated, is that there are a lot of variations here. These properties have sold, in many instances, numerous times, subject to a property inspection report that indicated that everything was okay, that there weren't any violations, things of that sort. Many of the homeowners that may have been responsible for the installation of the encroachments are no longer the homeowners. Some of the homeowners that are there presently had nothing to do with it. I think that when the West Newport matter was resolved, the thinking of the council, at least based on my review of some of the records, was that the money that was coming in from the permit process could be used to help defray some of the costs associated with the preparation of environmental documents in the approval process. And that might be something for the council to think about in connection with the current situation. There's an argument to be made that the removal of anything beyond the 15 feet is, in fact, something that improves beach access, and that is the, what the 85% is supposed to be used for is to improve beach access. There is a parking component of it that doesn't probably work for Peninsula Point, but there is the opportunity to use that money for beach access improvements. A couple of other things were mentioned that I just wanted to briefly touch on. The enforcement part, what happens if the city doesn't cooperatively reach some kind of a resolution with the homeowners? I think that what happens is, based on my discussions with Coastal, they're going to send out violation notices to every property owner, and I think it comes to about 75, and to the city, because the city is the owner of all the property. And so, the city would be declared by the Coastal Commission to be in violation regarding its ownership of the property, even though it may not have had any hand to play in the planting of the encroachments. So, I think that we really need to find the cooperative approach, and I think that that's what I've tried to outline in the letter that I sent to the city, that I think would work for all of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Are there other speakers on this matter? Please come forward.
Mayor Currie and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have two comments about this item. The first is, we've heard nothing about why the city owns a right-of-way between the houses and the beach. I would assume it means that some past council, or perhaps even the original subdivider of these properties, had a vision of building some kind of a public amenity there, whether it was a road or a pedestrian promenade. And I suspect the current problem of the creep of private development over the city right-of-way onto the beach has arisen largely through the city's neglect of that original vision. I would like to suggest that the wisest and most forward-looking solution that this council could have to the present problem would be to throw out policy L-12 and go back to that original vision, and consider extending the Newport Beach boardwalk all the way from the Santa Ana River to the harbor entrance. I'm pretty sure that's a public-access solution to this problem that the Coastal Commission would embrace with enthusiasm, even if it does disturb a bit of habitat. My second comment about this is the lack of consideration that this problem, to date, has received from our Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. I don't know if PBNR existed prior to the city charter, but the people certainly gave PBNR powers and duties there, some separately from and some jointly with you. And those are powers you're powerless to change, short of asking the people to change the charter. In particular, much like the federal constitution requires the president to make appointments and enter into treaties only with the advice and consent of the senate, as inconvenient and as inefficient as it may seem to you, the city charter suggests that taking actions and setting policies on matters related to our beaches and parkways should be done only after receiving advice and comments from PBNR. At your planning commission last month, I mentioned how that duty on both your parts seems to have been neglected in recent years, and this certainly seems to me to be a case in point. I think the quality of your decisions and the quality of citizen participation are both the poor for neglecting the procedures laid out in the charter and stripping our board and commission members of your rightful role in the public process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there other speakers?
All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the city council. I would just add, you know, this is obviously a difficult issue for the residents. It's a longstanding issue. Most of the ground cover is there to prevent sand from loyding the people's homes, and it's clear to me that there's a fee structure here, that much of the cost of this is going to be off-laid onto the property owners ultimately. We are going to have the opportunity to vote on this and give specific direction to staff in the balance of the meeting that begins at 7:00. Mr. Kiff, are there further questions or anything else you'd like to bring up on this before we move on to something else?
Briefly, maybe an opportunity to respond to Councilmember Petros's thought about what the mitigation might be. We don't really envision an opportunity for much more parking in that area either, but arguably, I think, we're intrigued at a staff level. What are other ways to bring people down there? Potentially, a summertime or weekend shuttle? Something could be funded from something like that, that could bring, that could accomplish a similar public access without impacting the streets in that manner. So, I think we do have some options available to us.
I think that there are still some opportunities of enhancing the street ends. They look like, from aerial anyway, that they might just be trails and kind of just whatever happened there. And those could be more formalized, benches, that type of thing, potentially, that would actually enhance that area for the residents that live there as well.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is public comments on matters not on the agenda. Are there any public comments on matters not on the agenda?
Mayor, it's agenda items and non-agenda items, which also include closed-session, regular-meeting, and study session items.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Currie and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. The study session agenda, as we just heard, for some reason fails to mention that this is the opportunity for the public to provide input on the items that you will be discussing in closed session. So, I appreciate that invitation from the clerk, and I trust you will be making the oral announcement required by the Brown Act to alert the public to those items, which oddly are not listed here, but on the separate 7:00 p.m. evening agenda. And beyond that, as I said at your last meeting, I think the quality of your closed-session decisions would be improved if you instructed the staff to describe here exactly what decisions you need to make in closed session. With that in mind, I'd like to call your attention to two of the six items, starting with item A, which it says is your instruction to the city manager as to the price and terms he should offer a private party for something regarding a property, which although not identified by name, turns out to be the West Newport Community Center, as near as I can tell from the address. Again, if we knew more clearly what you needed to decide in closed session, I assume there are many in our community with real estate experience who could guide you in understanding this, what this property's present value is, and quite likely suggest ways that you may not have thought of to maximize the public's return on it. But I'm frankly a bit surprised to see this on the agenda at all, since I had the impression you, as a council, had not yet made any decisions regarding your vision for public facilities in this area north of Hoag Hospital, and you certainly haven't yet asked for any review of this recreation facility by PBNR. Next, I would like to call attention to the very last item, under the conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Given the limitation of three minutes to comment on the entire closed session, about all I can do is to say that County of Orange versus Air California is a code name for the settlement agreement between the city and county regarding John Wayne Airport. I am very pleased to see that, at long last, you find this a topic worthy of discussion. But in my view, the characterization of this as active litigation involving a private airline, and therefore, a suitable topic for closed session, is really just a ruse to keep the public in the dark. The settlement agreement has, in fact, at least in my view, become nothing more than a normal policy agreement between two public agencies, and the court has little role anymore in this, other than holding the papers. It seems to me an affront to at least my idea of proper civics, that matters of public policy between public agencies should be debated, deliberated, and decided upon entirely out of the public eye. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn until 7:00. Thank you.